Good evening. Welcome to the regular city council meeting Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. We will start with, call the order please, or roll call?
Dave Bowman.
That's number two. Oh, I'm calling it, okay. But...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Clara Carrasco.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, additions or deletions?
There are no changes, additions, or deletions, of which I'm aware.
Thank you. We have some guests here tonight, and I'd like to recognize and honor them first. We have some young men that are Trail Scouts. They're on their way to becoming Eagle Scouts, and one of the things that is required in that journey is to have some civic involvement and attend a city council meeting. I believe all, or at least most of these young men, were here a couple months ago, and myself, and Bill Bell, and I think Shaney, some of you. I think there were there more than... Okay, maybe it was Blaine. Anyways, we had a meeting with them, fine young men, and welcome to council, and we're glad you're here, and good luck on getting all the way to Eagle Scout. And with that, is there anybody that would like to address council on any matters that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll get into the agenda then. And approval of minutes, city council consideration of the minutes of February 18th, 2020, regular city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 18th, 2020, regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next is planning commission appointment. City council consideration of the appointment of applicant Steve Mason to the City of Montrose Planning Commission for a term that expires on December 31, 2020. I don't... Would you like to come up and say anything? Here's your big moment, or... We'll proceed then.
So may I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm assuming that Mr. Mason would be appointed to fill a vac... Somebody who... What's the word I want? Resigned early?
A vacancy.
Okay. And so then he could be up for reappointment again in January?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And any other questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
One here. I'll make a motion to appoint Steve Mason to the City of Montrose Planning Commission for a term that expires on December 31, 2020.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Ordinance 2498, first reading. City council consideration of ordinance 2498 on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, authorizing and approving a site lease and lease purchase agreement between the city and U M Bank N A, solely in its capacity as trustee, approving not to exceed $16 million, principal amount of certificates of participation, Series 2020, and connection therewith, authorizing officials of the city to take all actions necessary to carry out the transactions contemplated hereby and related matters. City manager Bill Bell, please.
So I think we're going to have Kyle Thomas come up and talk to us and explain how the C O P, or Certificate of Participation, process works, and give us quite a bit of detail, I believe.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Good to be here again with you. So I'm here representing, I guess, a whole team, a financing team that's been working on this for the city, bond attorneys, as well as the trustee, and then a group from my bank. So we're here to talk about the C O Ps for the police facility. Certificates of Participation are essentially a lease-type transaction where the lease is then chopped up in little pieces and sold to investors, and then the proceeds from that lease are used for building the police station. So I have just a couple basic slides here of what the financing would look like. So the par amount is the actual amount of principal. So you can see it's right around 15 million that would be issued. The project fund is the amount of cash that's available at closing to use for constructing a project. The T I C is true interest cost. So that's kind of the effective borrowing rate that the city would borrow at, and that's based on market rates. As of a couple days ago, right now, we're in an incredibly interesting time in our space. You know, the Fed cut rates today 50 basis points, which affects the short-term curve, but there's just a lot of volatility that's happening. So rates are changing dramatically from day to day. So this was the rate a couple days ago. Certainly could change one way or the other. When you just take a step back, and I'll show you here in a couple slides, when you look at where rates have been over a 20-year period, borrowing rates today are very, very low. The 10-year Treasury closed below 1% today for the first time ever, just to give you a sense. So the debt service payments, that's how much is paid annually, are about $900,000, and that's kind of the target in terms of how much of the public safety sales tax the city would like to use on an annual basis for making payments on the public safety And again, this is a pretty basic slide here, just showing that for the first couple years, the concept is to have the lease structured as interest-only, and that being, it gives you some flexibility with additional cash available for those two years during the construction period, in case if there's any additional funds that are needed for finishing the facility or purchasing furnishings, or those sort of things that you might need, just as the budget's not completely finalized yet. You don't have, you know, construction-ready See if we can get this to go. There we go. So here's a history of interest rates, which again is a bit dated, even though this is only from last week. But so this is from the past 10 years. So this shows interest rates for one year, 10-year, and 20-years. So you can see where we're at today is the lowest that municipal borrowing rates have been in the last 10 years. And if we were to show this further, it would be true for the 20-year period as well. So borrowing rates are very low right now. I think my battery is running. There we go. So here's the last slide is the schedule. So first reading tonight. I'm sticking around this evening and meeting with some members of the community to talk about how people in the community can purchase these certificates when they're for sale next month, and how they could participate in that. We're also meeting with S and P on Thursday to describe the financing to the rating agency, talk about the credit characteristics of the city. S and P will provide a rating, and that's what investors will use as they rely on making an investment decision when a third-party reputable firm like S and P says, you know, "We believe that this is, you know, a double-A rated credit that brings a lot of credibility to investors to purchase that." The other... So there's a variety of documents that are being approved here this evening. The primary document that's used for marketing the certificates of participation is called the preliminary official statement, and I think you have a copy of that in your packet. It is preliminary. There's still going to be some changes that are made to that as we finalize it. There's a couple, you know, typographical errors or mistakes. We noticed that the mayor pretends occupation was incorrect. So those are the sort of things that will be finalized as we go through this process. The rating will be added once it's completed. But that document is then published where it's made available to investors, and that's how they make their investment decision on whether to participate in the bond sales. So right now, we're looking at a pricing the first week of April, and then closing the first week of May. And at closing is when those proceeds would be available, sitting in a bank account to be used to build the project. There's a variety of other documents, a site lease and a lease. Those are governing documents that kind of... Because this is a lease, it's a real estate transaction as well as a financing, so there's documents that control both of those pieces. And again, those are being approved as to form. There will be some additional changes that are made to those documents as we get near closing. That's what I had in terms of a presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Talk more about logistics of how we get from here to having cash in your hands to build your project.
Up and down the line, any questions?
So if, in a couple years, we have some extra money left over from the building project, is there an advantage to... I mean, like when I buy a car, I can pay some and bring down the remaining principal that's left to be paid. Is there an opportunity for the city to do that, or would it not be a wise move, or...
Yeah, no, that's...
Can you expound on that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So when bonds are sold, they're sold with a call feature. And when bonds are callable, that means the issuer, which is the city, has the option, but not the obligation, to prepay those bonds, so to pay those off early. So the standard in the marketplace is 10 years. So typically, for the first 10 years, you're kind of locked out from prepaying. We could shorten that a little bit. Because of the intricacies of how bonds are sold today, they're typically premium bonds. If you shorten the call feature, you'd actually get a little less proceeds, like that project fund amount would come down.
Okay.
But certainly, the bonds can be prepaid, but most likely, that period is going to be, even at a minimum, probably seven to eight years to upwards of 10, depending on kind of how that goes.
Okay. I didn't understand that. So that helps a lot. Thank you.
I was just going to highlight something for the public's benefit. When we, early on, we were going out to talk about 2A, and we talked about the cost estimate of this building being 16 million. That was from a needs assessment that was done several years ago, and then we had that updated with Jim McLaren and his group, and then that's what we used to go out to the public to give them a conceptual idea of what we were building and how much it might cost. So we're really excited about this proposal because we were able to meet that commitment. And as shown on here, with the interest rates the way they are and that type of thing, that original amount's a little less. And the interest rate we were talking about when we went out to the public was about 3.5, using USDA rural development. And now, as we see, the interest rate is much lower than that. And so I just think we should all be really excited about that. It ended up being the right time to do this project. We're getting more bang for our buck for the constituents. And also, it frees up by doing that pay your principal after the first two years. That gives us that little bit of extra, just because we know in our community, the inflationary increase on the cost of construction is a real issue that we're all facing at about, from what all the markets telling us, between 1% and 1.5% a month, depending on the type of construction you're using. And so having that, not putting that money into interest payments for that first year and a half or so, gives us that extra cash flow, which Kyle was mentioning, to handle any overruns, which would be primarily related to the inflationary increase of the cost of construction. It won't be to add a bunch of extra stuff to the building necessarily. It's probably going to end up just being that the cost of construction's going up because we're going to be working through the design for six to 12 months, and then construction after that. And so before we move into the building, it could be two and a half years before we actually get into the building. And throughout that time, we know costs will go up. So I think it's just, we're trying to be as transparent as we can and let people know that it's something we should all be excited about, that we're coming in at the right time. And we've had a good financial partner who's given us a lot of great advice along the way, and thankfully, they're the ones dealing with all this paperwork and all the details of it, because it changes every day, and I get more confused the more we talk about it. And so I really appreciate Kyle coming tonight.
Kyle, at what point will we know what interest rate we're locked in at, in this, like when we look at this schedule?
Yeah, the day we sell bonds.
Okay.
Yep. And once those bonds are sold, there'll be an agreement that's signed between my firm and the city to lock in those rates, and then that rate will be set for the life of the bonds.
And when will that be?
April 7th is the date we're targeting on there.
Okay.
It could... That could change. That's not set in stone, but that's kind of what we've been targeting from a timing perspective.
And so we can just sort of watch the stock market go up and down between now and then, and hopefully it lands in the right place?
Yeah. I... I'm not going to try and tell you what's going to happen.
If you have the answer, there are some big dollars for you. Clara, any comments?
No, sir.
Any other comments from council? I'm going to open up to the audience, open in a hearing. Do we have any comments, questions from the audience? Mr. Stockton?
Dave Stockton, 3009 Cook Drive. Bill, I'm excited. As you all probably know, I was a member of the Public Safety Citizens Committee that encouraged us going forward with hiring additional police officers in this building. I'm also a member of the One Community Safer Together Committee to get 2A passed. And as a candidate for city council, I want to encourage you guys to go ahead and approve this on first reading as presented. I read the package. I thought it was exciting, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2498 on first reading.
And that passes unanimously, and that's the next step to building a brand-new police building. That is very exciting. Ordinance 2495, first reading. City council consideration of ordinance 2495 on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, regarding the noxious weed management program for the City of Montrose. And Jim Scheid, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Also very exciting is our noxious weed management program, which we recently have updated to kind of clarify some of our operations and responsibilities between city and property owners. So it's basically an extended update, but it definitely is in line with our city code in Chapter 6-5, and we work closely with our code enforcement division to make sure we're both working against the same document here. This also includes the Noxious Weed Act from the state of Colorado, and we're following guidelines from that as well. And it's included in here with lists of noxious weeds throughout the state and in our county. And so this, again, as we discussed in work session, just puts clarity to responsibility of property owners, depending on what type of road is near their house. And probably the easiest way to understand that is the map that's included in this, and that shows the areas of right-of-way that are entirely maintained by the city. And so it just adds some clarity to some that may have questions about that. This will also include our no-spray list agreement, and so that's also a little bit of a change from the way we've done in the past. It's an agreement that we will get the property owners that are interested in that and draw out exactly where they would like not to be sprayed, and we document that through an agreement. So that's also part of this program. That's really the only changes from what we've done typically in the past through other plans. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council?
So Jim, I have a strange question. On the map, Locust Road, it doesn't show that you're going to do the whole road. It has, there's spots on it? Is that simply because the typing?
There are parts of Locust that are in the county. So the parts that are shown should be, unless I'm wrong, should just be city road.
I'm on page 254. I love that, when they confer.
That might be a good catch, Judy Ann. I think that that's because the city only owns the road in those certain pieces. I'll double-check that right now. But I believe that's because there's only pieces of city and county right there.
I've got a question. I saw on the back of somebody's fence a big sign that said, "Don't spray here." But just as a reminder, wouldn't they, they would need to file that and let the city know on an annual basis?
That's right.
Like, the sign is helpful reminder perhaps, but that's not how they let the city officially know?
That's right. They do need to come into Public Works and fill out the noxious weed no-spray agreement, and they need to do it every year, renewing right at January 1st. And we create maps for that, too. So we document where we're not spraying as well, and through that agreement. So yeah, anybody that wishes that we don't spray near the property needs to come in for that agreement.
And that agreement is contained in the document?
It is. Yep. It's in the packet, and we also have it at Public Works for anybody to fill out.
But doesn't that also say, if I choose to have you not spray that property, that I'm responsible for taking care of it?
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, if we're not going to spray it with our setup, then we still need to contain the noxious weeds in that area, and then it would be on the property owner that has requested us not spray there.
Otherwise, we could have this huge infestation, right, of noxious weed?
Exactly. Yeah. Noxious weeds obviously spread very quickly. They're very invasive, so there's a reason why we want to remove them.
Thank you.
And we did verify that on Locust Road. The sections that are red on the map are city sections of that road. The rest that is not highlighted is actually county.
Okay.
On 6650, 6650 Road, you're not showing anything there, and I believe part of that is in the city.
Yeah, so in that area, so the adjacent homeowners in that area would be responsible for the right-of-way, where on the other roads, they are a minor arterial, most of the ones that are highlighted, and that's why the city is maintaining those areas and not the area that's highlighted. So we do the roadway. On all roadways in the city, including alleyways, the city will do weed control. But the worst highlighted is the entire right-of-way, which is a lot of times outside of the roadway. Does that make sense? Did I just confuse you more? Maybe. I see some nodding and some shaking.
I'm waiting for there is any other questions, or Judy Ann, you do look like you're contemplating something?
No, I just happened to have a meeting last week with Justin from Montrose County, and we talked about this whole issue. And so it just, it seemed, I'm really pleased to see it coming up. I'm glad this is happening. Otherwise, we have this problem. We could get totally out of control. So Jim, I applaud you for having gotten us to this point.
Thank you. Clara, any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. And I can hold a hearing. Hearing is open. Is there any comment from the public, any questions on any of this? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2495 on first reading.
I'll second the motion.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number 10, ordinance 2496, first reading. City council consideration of ordinance 2496 on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designating the Missouri Building, 347 East Main Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And Assistant City Manager Anne Morgan Thaler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I will be presenting item 10 and 11 at the same time, though you'll vote on them separately. They're connected items. And oops. As mentioned, this item, both items are related to the designation of two historic properties on our main street. This is an overview of the site location, and it's what we know as the Vine Building and where Maggie's books are. So these two buildings, there's owned B1. And we're proposing separate designations for these buildings, even though they actually are one building because they're linked in between. So if you've been in those buildings, you've seen that between Maggie's bookstore and the Vine, there are doorways, and then upstairs, there are also doorways that go across the buildings. But we're proposing, I'm sorry, this is going in and out, I think, but we're proposing separate designations because they have different site numbers in our historical designations and the historic forms. They have separate addresses, and they were originally built separately. And so we'd like to consider them as separate buildings in the event that the property owners would like to make alterations to the buildings. They would come in, and if they just altered the side, for example, where Maggie's books is, we'd just consider the historic characteristics of that side of the building as opposed to where the Vine is. So that's why you have two items tonight instead of one. They also have separate histories, which we'll go through right now. So the Missouri Building first, brief business history, starting in 1882 all the way up to 2009. And now, where the Vine is, and there are apartments upstairs on the second story. It's at 347 East Main, but historically known as the Missouri Building. And you can see some of the important characteristics in these photos. There are, there's a beautiful metal cornice up at the top on the flat roof. And the second story has ornamental panels between the windows. You can see them. So it's the yellow building. You can see one ornamental panel on the second story between those two windows, and then it carries through all the way on the east side of the building. Then the block building has a separate business history, starting in 1886. It was the Masonic Lodge in Montrose, and then all the way up through 1987, when it was a Hallmark store, and now is a bookstore. So here's a picture, the green building. We call the block building. Something interesting about this building is in 1902 to 1911, there was a bowling alley and a pool hall underneath in the basement. And now, like I said, it houses the bookstore. It's a two-story rectangular brick building. There's a flat roof. And the second story has evenly spaced windows. And right now, you can see there are rectangular windows, and there used to be arched windows on top of the rectangular windows. And when the Historic Preservation Commission considered this building for designation, they discussed the fact that if there were additional alterations to this building, it would be really great to see windows come back in those arched openings. Right now, there's just wood in the openings, and there's no requirement for the owner to do that. But through Historic Preservation Review, our Historic Preservation Commission does identify things that would be great to see come back that were historic to the building. And for either of these buildings, or any building that's designated as historic, the owner may alter the building. And the process for that is, after a building's designated, the owner comes back to the Historic Preservation Commission and proposes alterations. And the Historic Preservation Commission reviews those alterations, and if an alteration doesn't alter something that's historically character-defining, it's possible to make that alteration. So it doesn't mean that these buildings are frozen in time and can only look like they look today. There definitely is the possibility of alterations, but we want to make sure that those alterations are done in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standard so that the property owner would have a better chance of qualifying for tax credits in the future if those alterations are made in a way that's consistent with those standards. So just Historic Preservation 101, very quickly. Here's the back of the buildings. And both buildings are eligible for historic designation per our ordinance. They're at least 50 years old, and they meet the association with events that have made a significant contribution to history. They also have distinctive characteristics of a tight-period method of construction. And then, let me just quickly check one more. And then, let me just quickly, one more. There also is always the connection with persons significant in history with both of these buildings, too, especially with the pool hall being there and the Masonic Lodge. These are the integrity criteria, and the Historic Preservation Commission found that they met the integrity criteria. And staff finds that they meet both the eligibility and the integrity criteria. And the Historic Preservation Commission recommended that you approve both designations for the buildings. But if you would, if you would like to move forward with the designations, please make two separate motions. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Come on, Judy Ann, you got the newspaper.
I thought it was extremely appropriate that Today's Daily Press ran this column that Marilyn Cox wrote earlier, but it's about the Masonic Building having been there 131 years ago. So, great pictures, and they look very much like the ones that we just saw. Done an amazing job restoring it to look like it did back then. And it's a great article, so if you haven't read it, find it and read it.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Clara?
I'd like for the ordinance to be passed, given that if I were the owner of these two buildings, I would love to get the tax credits for it. So, that's my personal input.
I'll just make a comment, too.
Please.
I just think that this is a wonderful thing for our community, and I want to thank the property owners for moving forward in this way. It's a great, great thing that helps downtown and the whole, the whole city.
With that, I can open up a hearing. Any comments from the audience? I do think there is a building owner in, did I see? Steve, if you'll come to the microphone, please.
Mr. Mayor, are you holding a hearing for both of them, or are you holding them for one at a time? I just want to make sure everyone-
Are you putting this building on the National Register or the State Register?
Would you like me to answer?
Please.
This is our local City of Montrose register. So, the city council will be voting tonight just on a local designation. The property owner did previously apply for state designation, but it was right in the middle of their construction project to rehabilitate these buildings. And so, the property owner could apply for state designation now as well, but that was put on hold while they were doing the construction project.
State's much easier to do than national.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. That's likely going to come, I would guess.
Okay, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to speak if... All right, seeing no other comments, I'll close the hearing on this one, and take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2495 on first reading as presented. Wait a minute, how about 2496?
Yes. I'll second that.
So, can we, oh, wait, I didn't mean to change the vote. I moved too quickly, I'm sorry.
As far as I can tell, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Number 11, Ordinance 2497, first reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance 2497 on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designating the Block Building at 345 East Main Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And again, Assistant City Manager Anne Morgan Thaler, please.
And I'll just note for the record that we just presented the information to you in item 10, and I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
And any more discussion from council? Clara? I will hold a hearing. Anybody that would like to speak about this? I will close the hearing, and I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pass Ordinance 2497 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number 12, Travel Home Park Permit. City Council consideration of a travel home park permit at 801 South Hillcrest Drive for the benevolent BPOE, the Elks Lodge 1053, Senior Planner Gary Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a site and project that you're all are very familiar with, but for the benefit of the audience, I'll go through a few maps to orient everyone. The property is located at 801 South Hillcrest. It is the BPOE Lodge. It's about seven acres in size. And as you can see from the aerial photo, there's a large grassy area west of the main lodge that is proposed as a RV park. Here is a zoning map showing the B2 highway commercial zoning that was approved back in 2016, kind of set up the request for a RV park permit. Moving on, a few photos of the site. These are mostly the existing seven or eight pedestal, electric pedestals and RV sites that had been around for a number of years. It's considered, in planners' terms, a legally non-conforming use. So, these would be eliminated and reconfigured into the project I'm going to show everyone in a minute. So, we've gone through a relatively lengthy process to get to where we are today. There's a rezone of the property back in 2016, as I mentioned. Conditional use permit, which was recommended for approval, or approved by the Planning Commission. It was appealed, and then, of course, went to a de novo hearing by the city council. And at the January 21st meeting of city council, the council approved several conditions which are listed on this slide. One was to reduce the total number of units or sites from 32 to 28, and take off the four in question from the southern area to enable better buffering to the neighborhood. Eight-foot privacy fence that actually was, was recommended by, or approved by Planning Commission as well. And that the, the permit would only carry with the Elks Lodge, and that if they sold the property, they would have to come back for reapproval or asking for approval of their conditional use permit. So, what we're doing tonight is really verifying, providing final approval for the site layout that was approved back in January. So, this next slide is just, it's just the official process that's listed in the city code, and it outlines how, what the Planning Commission does, what the city council does. That reflects where we are today. So, we're at the final step, and what we have is a RV park permit that council has final authority on, that is laid out as you see. This is the same layout that was shared back in January, with the exception of removing the four sites near the southern boundary. So, if this is approved by council, it would allow the owner to commence with installing improvements and having an RV park. So, that is pretty much all I have. If there's questions, I can answer them now.
Gary, the map that is shown with the four positions removed, that will be part of the official record?
Yes. It will be part of the record of this meeting, and it, it will be reflected on the Declaration of Covenants and the permit that they, that they hold. So, they have to, they have to build what's shown here. Thank you.
Gary, the four that we asked to be removed, are they kind of missing from that little clouded circle there? I don't know how else to describe-
Yes. Yeah, that clouded circle is there just to indicate the change that occurred.
So, that's where they were?
Yes.
And now they're-
Exactly where they were.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Clara? And we can take public comment, questions? There's anybody? David Frank, please.
Dave Frank, 2866 Foxtail Drive, Montrose, Colorado. As a clarification and elaboration for the public, that this proposed RV park is not open to the public. That is only for private use for Elks Lodge members only. Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, making sure that the public understands that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, that is not a condition imposed by the city. That, that is a commitment made by the Elks.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that that, that it's not a requirement of us.
Annabelle, 1117 Ridge Street. I just want to make sure, I know they said in the paper that they wanted to be up and running by Memorial Day, that they will have their fence in before they are up and running?
Absolutely. Is that, I'm going to defer to-
At least, that's what I saw, like, in the paper.
I didn't hear all of that statement, or that question.
That they cannot open up this RV park until that fence is erected.
Yes, all improvements would need to be installed as shown on this plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Did I ask anything? I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel home park permit at 801 South Hillcrest Drive as presented.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 13, Community Development Block Grant Hearing. A public hearing will be held to allow citizens to review and comment on the city's performance in carrying out a federally funded community development block grant, grant 18-042 Woodgate Trails Senior Apartments, and to fulfill the programmatic closeout requirement of the grant. Kendall Kramer, please, grant director.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. I have some required information that I have to read per the requirements of the CDBG program, so I'll just dive right into that. The purpose of this hearing is to gather citizen input on the completion of a federally funded community development block grant project. The City of Montrose, on behalf of Four Corners Development, LLC, submitted a grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs in January of 2018 to secure $500,000 to assist with land acquisition costs associated with the Woodgate Trails Senior Apartments complex, a 50-unit senior housing project located at 1700 Odell Road, Montrose, Colorado, 81401. The funding was secured and used to create a revolving loan fund for the aforementioned project and similar projects. Woodgate Trails LLP will pay the loan back over 40 years. No direct funding was provided by the city. The project will assist those at many different income levels with five units for those earning 30% of the area median income, nine units for those earning 40% of the area median income, and 23, 23 units for those earning 50% of the area median income, and 13 units for those earning 60% of the area median income. The total project costs were $13,381,650, including the $500,000 community development block grant. The project was completed in November of 2019, and all units are currently leased. The city seeks to support the capital funding needs of nonprofits in the community through the CDBG program, which brings outside money into the city and recaptures federal tax dollars. These projects may be delayed or never pursued if for not for the CDBG program and the support of the city. Recent examples in support of CDBG projects include the Center for Mental Health with the improvements over there, as well as Maslow Academy. No persons were displaced or relocated as a result of the CDBG project. The grant application and records are on file at City Hall, 433 South First Street, Montrose, Colorado, 81401, during regular business hours, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. With that being said, I continue questions on the project. We also have a representative of Woodgate Trails, Jeanne McNair, Jenny McNair, the community manager, is also here this evening, if you would like to ask her questions.
I'm going to bring Jeanne up first. I do want to say to the audience, and particularly the kids back there, this is that big building that you see east of City Market South. It is a home for 55 and above with income restrictions, and it's, I think I'll, the council had a wonderful opportunity to go through it and look at it today, and I'll let the rest of council make comments on that as they wish. But first, Jeanne, please.
And thank you for the tour today.
Yes, it was wonderful meeting all of you and having you there. I'm very excited to be the community manager at Woodgate Trails. My degree is in gerontology, and so I'm glad to be working with seniors again, and they're a great group of residents. We're very happy that everything's filled. If any of you have any questions, I think Kendall kind of covered everything. Or if the community has any questions.
I think I'll start with council. Do you, any comments or?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I, I took the tour along with many of my colleagues, and it's a beautiful building. We got to actually visit with some residents, and it's really quite a stunning property. I was very impressed, and I was thinking as I was going through it, I wish my mother would have been able to live there. It is that nice that I would have been happy to have her there.
Any other questions from council? I just, it's a series of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, very modern, very bright. It's just a wonderful feeling as soon as you walk in the front door. Very, it's a wonderful asset for our community, particularly for our low-income senior citizens that can qualify for that. It's just beautiful.
And we are taking an ongoing waiting list for those that are interested, should we have openings in the future.
I guess it opened in November and was almost immediately full. It is 100% at a capacity right now.
And they're all on year leases, so we're hoping to be stable for a year.
Fantastic.
I just comment that the individuals that we had an opportunity to speak with that live there all seem to be very happy. And the one lady that fixed the cookies, they were excellent.
They're wonderful.
Clara, any comments?
Given that our population at Montrose is growing, that we're seeing many young-at-heart retired folks coming into our county-
It's all right.
I'm glad that we see an elderly care center built.
Thank you. And I'll open it up. Questions, comments from the community? Seeing none? Jeanne, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would take a motion.
Do we need?
No, no motion is required. Just closing out the public hearing.
It was a hearing. Did you do a formal hearing?
I will open up a hearing. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Number four, Sierra Reservoir Outlet Works Replacement Change Order. City Council consideration of the award of contract change orders totaling $186,000 for the completion of the Sierra Reservoir Outlet Works Replacement Project. This includes $146,000 to Mountain Valley Contracting for construction, and $40,000 to RJH Consultants for engineering support and construction oversight, and civil engineer to Ryan Kushner. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I, I think you stole everything that I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, that we've discussed this previously at a previous work session. You're exactly correct. We're here to entertain a change order in order to fulfill the completion of the construction of the outlet works at Sierra Reservoir with construction of, or updating something originally built in the 1920s. We were anticipating a little bit of frustrations, and this is to take us through the end of the construction. We're still planning on being able to be completed by the, by the spring of 2020 in the attempts of, or in order to fill this spring and utilize our, our water shares with-
Bushwick, water conservancy.
Questions, comments? Council has discussed this numerous times as we've gone through this project. It has been somewhat lengthy project, but, but not, the length was something that could not be avoided, so with that.
Well, for all of us who live in this area too, and ever want to go dig a hole in your backyard, you know that we have unstable soils, and things are going to happen. You can't determine ahead of time, so the fact that we had to add this extra stuff, that's just the way it is.
It was very surprising at some times of, of the conditions of the embankment and what, what situations we were encountering, and with all of the attention on making our community more resilient, both in water availability and just having a reservoir upstream of, of a large population center, we're, we're very happy that we're finding these conditions and able to address them through this outlet works replacement project.
Do you have any kind of target date when there may be fish back alive in the, in the lake?
It will take a significant amount of time in order to fill the reservoir. There, there's pretty strict restrictions imposed by the state for good reason of, for that filling, to make sure that we don't compromise the integrity of the embankment. I don't have a good date from CPW about when they plan to stock, but I'm sure council will be first to know.
Or great.
Any other comments from council? Clara?
I would just like to comment that water rights is a big issue to our community, so I'm glad we are doing something about it, given that it was built in the roaring 20s and it's not then, at this time.
Cool. It'd be interesting to see if somehow we could get a field trip for youth council to go see what that is. I think you guys would be really impressed with where it is, what it is, and what it's going to be, so if, I'll just throw that out to staff if that's something that they can, I'll go, but I'm not driving. Bill can.
But at that same time, that field trip should go across the highway and do the trail system that the City Parks Department is going to do additional work on this year. It's very popular with the Montrose High School mountain biking team.
It's pretty amazing that that old dam has lasted so long, and it's kind of a little-known gem in our community that, you know, we, it's nice that we're getting it modernized. It's a really interesting story.
Definitely, and with the habitat improvements, we hope that we'll be able to improve the fishing access and the fish habitat itself in the reservoir, so it'll be that much more enjoyable of a fishing experience now with the cooperation with CPW.
Are you changing the banks somehow? Because I know before it was just kind of like, like it wasn't exactly designed for a fishing habitat, so is there some change that's going to be on those banks now, or what?
We did change some of the, well, maybe fishermen will enjoy the opportunity to find select locations, but we did increase the amount of reservoir within the, what they consider a habitable zone. That increases where all their foods, where fishing food sources are, and we added a handful of boulder clusters. So we did change some of the embankment-
Okay.
-in the natural embankment side. So not really embankment, but the natural slope side.
The natural slope side, some more rocks and some pools and stuff under the water surface. Okay, great.
And I can take public comment if anybody would like to speak about a reservoir and a dam.
Just a joke. No, we're the second edition of the roaring 20s.
Thank you, Mr. Stockton. And with that, I would-
I'd just like to comment, if any of you haven't been up there to take a look at it, that lake is not only, not too big around, but it is deep. I don't recommend you slip in there when it's full.
Thank you. I would take a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to award contract change orders totaling $186,000 for completion of the Sero Reservoir Outlet Works Replacement Project. This includes $146,000 to Mountain Valley Contracting for construction, and $40,000 to RJH Consultants for engineering support and construction oversight.
I'll second it. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item, excuse me, item 15, sole source purchase of rapid deployment boom. City Council consideration of a sole source purchase to Ferris Machinery for a rapid deployment boom for the city's Vector truck for the total price of $62,056.63. And Utilities Manager, David Breeze, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And as, as you stated, what this is, is a rapid deployment boom for our Vector truck. The Vector truck is the truck that we use to clean the sewer lines, where we run a high jet, high-pressure jet hose up through the line to break any debris up and bring it down the line, and the vacuum system removes that debris rather than sending it down through the sewers and potentially causing downstream backups. The rapid deployment boom is a new development that Vector has recently released about a year ago, that rather than piecing together segments of pipe in order to drop down into the manholes, it has a self-retracting boom that pulls within the tube and lowers down in there, eliminating a lot of the safety hazards for the crew that are operating those systems. With the current system, they're using the hydraulic system to raise up and down the boom and try to close those sections up, put clamps around them, and clamp those together, all of which creates safety risk of getting somebody's fingers pinched and those type of things. The other advantage of, of the rapid deployment boom is much quicker. Every time we set up at a manhole, we have to assemble those tubes and, and lower those in the manhole as we're assembling those. This system, we pull up to the manhole, it's more of a one-man operation, can lower that boom down into the manhole and start that cleaning process much quicker with the new system. And that's, the, the cost on this was included in the budget for 2020, but we're not sufficiently budgeted because as with a lot of new development, the manufacturer's rep that was providing us the quotes for this didn't understand the full, full amount of work that was needed in order to do the retrofit. They did one here last fall for the City of Rifle, and, and learned that there was some additional costs that they needed to include in that. That was after our budget was, was submitted and in, in the process of approval. So we've looked at our wastewater collection budget, and we've come up with a couple of other things that had lesser value as far as importance and stuff to, to be implemented. One of those was a, a second set of sound dampening communication systems, earmuffs with speakers and stuff that our crews use when they're around the high, high noise equipment. And that, we've got to currently have one set, and it's not used all of the time. We thought at budget time that there was enough of a need to justify that, but we believe we can push that off either till later in the year and look at budget at that point in time, or, or add it into the 2021 budget for, for that process. The other thing is, we, we had budgeted for six manhole replacements and for contracting six of those out. We've looked at our schedule of our crews and stuff, and we believe that we can do one of those in-house, which saves about $7,500 of, of cost in order to do that. So with those two modifications in our, in our budget, we, we believe we've got the funding available without any budget modifications to, to do the rapid boom system. With that, I'll take any questions.
Clara, any questions about a deployment boom?
Essentially, this would decrease safety hazards, is what you stated, right?
Yeah, it's, it's going to decrease some of the safety risks for our employees, the operators of the equipment, and it'll improve efficiency of the crews, where they'll be able to set up much more, what's quicker, and, and be in and out of these manholes in a more timely manner.
Okay. My only comment would be that it'd probably be a good idea to essentially pass this because at the end of the day, a safety hazard could end up costing a lot more than what this could cost, so.
Thank you. Right on. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the sole source purchase Ferris machinery for the rapid deployment boom for a total price $62,056.63 as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. Sure.
I just want to thank you, David, for the budget adjustments that you did. I think that's highly responsible, and we don't have to, you know, go over budget to get this, so thanks for that effort.
You're welcome. Item 16, sole source purchase for centrifuge repair. City Council consideration of a sole source agreement with Centrus Centrifuge Systems in an amount to exceed 50, not to exceed $57,085 for repairs to centrifuge number two at the wastewater treatment plant. And again, Utilities Manager, David Breeze, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a repair of some, of an existing centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant. The centrifuge is used to de-water the biosolids product at the end of the wastewater treatment plant. So as part of the treatment process, we separate the solids from the liquids, liquids being treated and ultimately discharged into the Uncompadre River, and the solids then are, are collected, and, and the centrifuge takes a lot of the water out of those to where they get to be in a, in a condition that's easily to be hauled. We currently haul them to CBI Industries near Delta, and they compost those and, and are reutilized as soil amendments in the agricultural community and stuff. So the, the inspection that we did late 2018 identified that there was some broken tiles in, in the centrifuges that weren't creating immediate need for repairs, but were needed to be looked at, and, and so that was included in this year's budget. We included $70,000 to remove the centrifuge, ship it off to California for it to be re-inspected in California at the manufacturer's facility, and brought back up to its original standards and then shipped back and be reinstalled. So the contract with Centrus is for the repair of this, and they sent us several different costs, whether it's a minor repair or a major repair, and which we don't know until they get it in there and do that final inspection. This is the outside end of those costs for the drive assembly as well as the centrifuge. The additional cost that there is in this would be about $14,000 for their local representative to remove the centrifuge, ship it to California, get, ship it back here, and then reinstall
Any questions? We've discussed this previously, and I think council's all aware of exactly what's going on and how long it'll take, and you've given us great information in the past, so, but if there are questions from particular councilors? Clara?
Mine is just a general question. With the cost of a minor or major repair, is it already taken into account in the budget?
Yes, yes. There was $70,000, and the outside end of this is right there at that, about $70,000 plus or minus 50 bucks and stuff. So we, the budget was pretty much spot-on for the outside end of it. If the costs come in significantly less, if there's only minor repairs needed and, and we have room, then the other centrifuge also needs some, so we may look at shipping that off later this year if the budget room allows, or we would budget for that in 2021.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a sole source agreement with Centrus Centrifuge Systems in an amount not to exceed $57,085 for repairs to centrifuge number two at the wastewater treatment plant as presented.
I'll second that. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And one more for David Breeze. Nutrient Removal Optimization Study Agreement. City Council consideration of an agreement with Corolo Engineers, Inc., to perform nutrient removal optimization study at the City of Montrose wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed $85,000.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a project that's a result of our National Pollution Elimination Discharge System, our NPDS permit at the wastewater treatment plant. The state regulates our discharge into the Uncompadre River that, for a whole bunch of different constituents and stuff, and nutrients is one of those. The, the nutrient loading on the river is getting lower and lower as far as our wastewater treatment plant discharge is allowed, and this study is basically to look at our wastewater treatment plant and try to optimize the nutrient removal properties of the treatment plant. And that is done through several biological processes and controlling how much air is, is fed, is in the, the water at the treatment plant during different treatment spaces. And so that's, part of this whole study is to look at the treatment plant operation and to, to maximize our nutrient removal without incurring additional capital cost for, for additional basins, additional treatment processes at the treatment plant. From the RFQ that we issued, and we've got three proposals, or three statement of qualifications from three different engineering firms, Corolo, Burns &amp; McDonald, and Farnsworth, we looked at those, at their qualifications, we looked at their previous projects, we, and specifically on Corolo provided us a lot of data of how treatment processes had been adjusted and met much more stringent regulations and stuff, and it gave us some real-world results that really instilled a lot of confidence in the team that was doing the rating, in, in their skills and their ability to really help us out and meet the, the upcoming regulations without, hopefully without having to build some huge capital improvements. This was a qualifications-only-based selection process, so we went through and looked at those qualifications, and we selected who we felt was going to be the most qualified engineering firm to help us through this process. And then we sat down with them, worked with them to develop that scope of services and the cost for that. They proposed an hourly, or a cost not to exceed $70,840. We looked at that, and based on some of the unknowns and the, the need for additional sampling and testing and some of the things, we felt we needed to add about a 20% contingency on there that would provide us as staff the ability to go, you know, let's get, drill down into this a little bit more, and let's get more details rather than, than just going off of the additional scope that they had proposed. So this would be the first phase of the study, and then a second phase would, would follow up with this, which would be less, probably much less cost than this, but would actually pilot test what their proposed improvements are, and, and verify and validate that we are actually getting the results that their model is predicting that we would get. Again, this, this project was included in the 2020 budget at $50,000, but we also had a 50- but we also had a fifty thousand dollars in there for a salinity study. Staff has looked at that and we actually did, completed the salinity study. It was due the first of March and with the time constraints and the, the level of input that we needed to have on it, we just felt we could do that and save that fifty thousand dollars and better apply that money for this project, which takes a lot more technical knowledge and, and the leading edge scientists to really help with.
Are you saying you did that salinity project in-house? Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes. We did that in-house.
And it's done?
About a week ago.
Okay.
Any other questions? Clara? Audience? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Corolo Engineers, Inc. to perform nutrient removal optimization study at the city of Montrose wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Eighteen, golf course equipment purchase recommendation. City Council consideration of a bid for the purchase of one greens mower, one grounds mower and one self-propelled sprayer for use at Black Canyon Golf Course. And Public Works Manager Jim Scheid, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, so we have a recommendation for three pieces of equipment at the golf course. And like you said, it's a greens mower, a grounds mower and a sprayer. All three of these are, have been included in our replacement schedule of equipment and they were included in our 2020 budget. And nothing else has changed on this since we talked about it at a work session, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I recommend that we purchase this from L. Johnson out of Denver.
Comments from council? Questions? Clara? Any comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to, to award the purchase of one greens mower, one grounds mower and one self-propelled sprayer to LL Johnson of Denver, Colorado for the total purchase price of one hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars.
I'll second that.
And that passes unanimously. Number nineteen, in-car and body worn camera purchase request. City Council consideration of the purchase of forty Axon in-car and forty-five body worn cameras with a Ware Plus for the Montrose Police Department for the total purchase price of one hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. And it looks like Commander Cox and Commander Smith, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. So moving forward, we are requesting to purchase the Axon in-car camera and body, or body worn cameras as Mayor stated. We've got an opportunity with some changes moving forward. Just to give the community a little bit of background, why we're looking at moving to the body worn camera system and the in-car camera system. Currently, we are using the same type of system we've had since 1999. It's getting a little bit antiquated. That system is only directional, in-car, front facing and rear facing, and the officer wears a body mic that does not have a camera attached. So as soon as we leave the patrol car and move to go into a house to speak with an individual, we're not catching all of that. Some of the other issues that we're having with this system is not catching, the system's not activating properly. We're not able to catch all the information that may be occurring, so we're not able to be transparent when we come back for proper prosecutions. Also that this protects us from civil liability. Moving forward, we also realize that we're running out of server space, so having the actual physical servers, moving to an intelligence-led policing style of policing, we know that we're going to have a lot higher contacts and more involved types of situations that require a lot of video time, both audio and video, and we want to make sure and capture that to make those better prosecutions and also steer away from civil liability. In the current 2020 budget, we realize that it's going to cost for that additional server and a backup server approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just to be able to keep up with the current system we have to be able to store that, that footage. Moving forward, if we do move to the new system, we're looking at purchasing nine patrol vehicles this year with, if we do not put that old system in it and we look at moving forward to the new system, we'll save approximately seventy-seven thousand four hundred dollars that we can put towards the new system. Each one of those systems is approximately eighty-six hundred dollars a piece. And moving forward, the great thing about the Axon Body Cameras in-Car System is the Ware Plus program. This program allows gunshot detection, remote live view and GPS locating features that go along with that officer. So as they get into the vehicle, get out of the vehicle, we're going to have audio and video the whole time. With that Ware Plus system as well, this is all cloud-based storage, so we no longer have the physical storage, those physical servers. Moving forward, it's all included within this price. Some of the things also that are great, that work with this system is it integrates with our CAD system, which is our report documenting system spilling. And so when an officer arrives on scene and say one or two more officers arrive, they all link together and if they're, say the second officer that arrives on scene doesn't have time to turn on their body cam, it'll automatically turn it on and link it and all correlate back to that CAD system. In the end, it's going to save us a lot of time for our records technicians. On the old system, we had to burn individual discs to give it to the prosecution, for prosecution and to the defense teams. So there was a lot of labor for our records techs and even our officers entering that information in. With this new Ware Plus system, it ties it all together and it's going to save a lot of staff time and money. Like the, like the Mayor mentioned, we're looking at using forty in-car systems, which also has the front view and rear view, and then the forty-five body worn cameras. With an estimated total cost of over five years, one hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars each year with a total amount of six, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and ten dollars. Moving forward, we spoke with IS Department and they too agree that this is a money-saving opportunity utilizing the seventy-seven thousand four hundred dollars. We can move forward, which will take us to a greater system with the cloud-based storage. Using that money along with an additional request of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars out of the Public Safety Fund, we believe that it's going to be a more viable system and be up to date and useful in the future. Moving forward, there's some other great features that I forgot to mention with the body worn cameras is this new, it's almost like a lease, a five-year lease really, and after, let's say, two years you're having problems or they have new software updates, they send us all new equipment and we can update that. So we're never going to be kind of back in the shoes where we are now with a system that's not working. With that being said, I don't know if I missed anything.
Can I answer any questions you may have?
I think that it's important to be clear about the cost. That price for 2020 is one hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, but there'll be additional costs and then it's a five-year total. So it just, I want to make sure we're being really clear because this is a total purchase price, but it's really, that's the total 2020 cost and there'll be additional costs in the subsequent years.
Probably additional savings too, from a hardware standpoint. I think one thing I wanted to point out, you mentioned it, but I think it's really critical, is that I get the impression from what you've said, this will really facilitate prosecutions. And so I know in the past, it's been a problem that you take somebody off the street and then they're back on it in a short amount of time. And so this is going to address that and hopefully keep these people where they belong and let the prosecutors do their jobs. So I think it, it has a value there that you can't put dollar numbers on, but certainly important for the safety of our community.
Yes, sir. And just to add to that too, that's a great thing about the new software and we kind of, the reason we waited to go to body cameras and tell where we're at now is the redaction that we need to, so if we have juveniles or victims that we don't want to release and can't be released by statute, this new software, we can blur a face, blur a license plate and it automatically updates through that whole video, whereas in the past with the prior technology, you weren't able to do that, so there's a lot of time spent. So I think we're hitting it at a great time with the budget savings we have this year. If we switch to the program from the old system to the new system and just the technology, I think we're going to be far ahead of where we were.
I like the way that it integrates with the new building. I know when we looked at modern police buildings, other communities that had new, modern police buildings, this was a system they used across the board, not only on their body worn cameras and their cars, but in their interview rooms as well. So I really like the idea that we're improving and upgrading to really what is best practice in the industry.
Yes, ma'am, and that's a nice thing. It's all cloud-based, so we're not going to have any physical servers in the new police facility building or for any of the body cams. They all hook up and that's another thing we had issues with is we had to leave vehicles running while we were letting that stuff upload and it wasn't beneficial because if we pulled away or had to go to another call, we would lose that upload. In this new system, we won't have to worry about that.
I thought it really interesting in the past years, talking to other communities who already had the body worn cameras, their problems with the storage. That became a huge thing, you know, because they have, they have this physical storage you have to have. And so this being able to go on the cloud and not having to have actual servers, I feel is a real advantage and makes it much easier to use and share.
I would agree with that and that's what we're seeing from other agencies in the area that are utilizing Delta PD, Grand Junction Police Department. That's one of the things they realized with the cloud base. There also, that system with Axon, we can upload a lot of other things too, whether it's other evidence we may have. It's that unlimited storage, so it actually allows us a lot more storage space.
Question for Bill Bell. Because of, with, with the passage of two A, we have the kind of money to improve and expand our technology in the police department. Is this, this is coming out of two A?
Yeah. We budgeted this year the two A monies to allow for switching over to intelligence-led policing and to make necessary improvements in the department. And it just so happened that the timing of replacing these with the new squads, it all came together at the right time. So yeah, having the two A monies allows us the flexibility to be able to do this.
And again, thanks to the community for passing that so we can do this because this doesn't just benefit the police department, it benefits the citizens. I mean, it, it sort of puts everything on a level playing field. We have the pictures, the evidence, so everybody is protected and I think that's really important. And the other thing I want to note, because you're going to be hearing and seeing a lot of collaboration between our IT department and our police department, from what we've learned going and looking at modern police stations in Colorado, the connection and collaboration between the PD and the IT is absolutely essential and it's, it's almost mind-blowing sometime how all that fits together and has to fit together. So I think this is really, really a wise thing for our entire community. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I had one more question. Barbara brought up a point about how this will integrate in the new building, so I'm wondering if you acquire it now and we use it in the old building, will it, will it be easy or difficult when the new building comes online to move this in there?
It's going to be all cloud-based, so it's going to be a really easy transition. We won't be using any of our physical servers that we do now once we switch over because we're going to switch all of our vehicles over to the Axon in-car and the body worn cameras, so it's all going to be cloud-based. So it'll be just like adding three or four more body cameras for those interview rooms in the new police facility, so it'll be a very easy transition.
Pretty simple and seamless, huh?
Yes, sir.
Great, that's good.
How soon will you purchase this equipment and start using it in the community?
I think as soon as possible. If, if you guys pass this, this evening, I think we're going to be looking at getting it up and running as soon as we can. Obviously with having some of the current vehicles with the older system in it, it'll take a little bit of time to get those upgraded in that new in-car system, but we can get the purchase of the forty-five body worn cameras and start implementing it immediately.
Does our fleet department help with upgrade of the in-car stuff or do we outsource that? Is that part of the contract? Who actually changes it over?
With the new nine patrol vehicles, those will be put in by the, who are we at our contract with? And then the additional ones, we've worked with the fleet division and we're going to start installing those, not all at once, but just give it some time in between so we're not a lot of downtime with patrol vehicles.
I just wanted to comment, I think in today's environment, this gives us a, a very good legal tool to use. So many people out there videotaping when an officer arrests somebody, they can do chop shopping on those things, do all kinds of things with them and then retweet them out. And we've seen departments having problems with that. We've seen the news media get involved with it. I think this gives us a real good protection from a liability standpoint. I think it's a good way to go.
I would agree and that goes both ways. It's to be transparent with the community, but it also protects both individuals, both the officer and the citizen. Everything's documented very well and we can come back and review that footage and there's no question of to what, what occurred.
Any other questions from council? Clara?
Updating the current servers compared to investing in the future with this technology would far outweigh what the cons versus the pros. And as many of the councilor members have already stated, this is pretty useful from the justice side, given that we can use it in prosecutions or defense in relation to our citizens and the city. And I, I'm excited to see this used in our town, given that we are growing and we will start seeing cases such as the media starts presenting them. And since we will have something to stop citizen civil liability, I am pretty stoked to see our police department is updating and becoming more modern and also see that it's going to be implemented within our town. So I'm just excited.
Thank you. Comments from the audience?
Dave Stockton, three zero zero nine Cook Drive. I'm an OTEC guy and I've got a hundred questions, but I'll only ask one. Why the difference in the quantity between in-car versus body cams? You've got forty in-car and then forty-five body cams.
Great question. So we have officers that have different details, like investigations that aren't in an active marking unit rolling around with in-car systems all the time. So say we have a SWAT operation or SWAT call-out, some of those officers may be part of the SWAT team, but they are not equipped with a body camera for their everyday duties. And this enables us to have those extra body cams to put on those officers if they are in a tactical situation or a situation that calls for a body cam.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from anybody? I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of forty Axon in-car and forty-five body worn cameras with Ware for the total purchase price of one hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars as presented.
I'll second it.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
And with that, we will move to public information report. Mr. Bill Bell.
I only have, one thing I wanted to highlight and then if anyone else on the team has something they'd like to share. I just wanted to highlight a training opportunity that I just wanted to highlight a training opportunity that three of us from the city participated in the last couple of days over at the Ute Indian Museum. Ann and I and Bethany, our new community engagement specialist, took part in a leadership-on-the-ground program. There's about forty, or twenty-four participants over the last two days, spent time together talking about how we can work on equity and inclusion and diversity throughout our entire community. And the event was sponsored by the Colorado Health Foundation and the Center for Creative Leadership. It also builds in an executive coaching piece to it, four hours of coaching for each of the participants, talking about how to become a stronger leader in the, in the world of equity, diversity, and inclusion. And we will be spending six whole days together, so we did yesterday and today, and then over the next couple of months, we'll have another four days together. And we've been encouraged by sharing all of our contact info. We're going to start working as a cohort group in the community, primarily staff members from various organizations, City Boys and Girls Club, Community Foundation, All Points Transit, Tri-County Health Network, and just a long list of other entities that I'm forgetting right now, because I just met a lot of these people. And so it was really, really good for Ann and I and Bethany to go and, and meet a lot of people outside of the people we work with all the time, but who are doing great things in our community. There were representatives from Norwood Clinic as well, Naterita, so it wasn't just Montrose, it was all of Montrose County proper. And I'm just really excited about it. And I know that ties in with a lot of the work that we're already doing with HAP, who recently came to a council meeting, and on some social issues such as homelessness and, and vagrancy and, and, you know, the food banks that we have, sharing ministries and the, and the food kitchens. So all of those things will be discussed over the next four days. Spent the last two days really just getting to know each other, building our network and learning about inclusion and equity and diversity, and then learning a bit about our behavioral traits and how we can learn to get along with other people, especially people that might have different political philosophies than all of us, because there's a lot of different people in the community representing different groups and, and ideas. So it was really, really fun. I don't know if Ann has anything that I missed. So we're just thankful to be able to participate with that.
Thank you. First of all, any comments from staff? Matt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight and letting us talk about Axon. I do have just one thing I wanted to highlight. Last night, we had our annual awards ceremony for the Montrose Police Department. Annual in that it's supposed to be annual, but last night, we awarded two years' worth of awards because we didn't get to do it in 2018. So it was a great time for our administration to showcase and highlight and recognize our officers for the great work that they do in the community every single day. Some of the things that they do often aren't seen, and that's all right, because we don't expect to be seen, but, but officers do like the recognition for the work that they do. And it's also nice to show recognition to them for their dedication to our community and to public safety as a whole. The main point that I wanted to bring up is that a lot of you were there for that awards ceremony. City administration was there, Council was there, and that really spoke to our officers and lets us know the kind of leadership and community aspect that, that we do have here at the city. So it was noticed, and it was appreciative. And I just wanted to say on behalf of the Montrose Police Department, thank you guys for being there. It was a great event, and we had a good time.
It really was a very classy event and very enlightening, at least for me, to hear all the different events that our officers go through and how they handle it, and not just crime things, but how they reach out to community members, picking up a homeless person and, and taking them out for a meal and then helping them find somewhere to stay. I mean, it's, it's really heartwarming to hear all the stories of what our police officers do to help take care of people. Hats off to you guys. Excellent job.
I think it would be good, Matt, if you could recall the number of officers involved in life-saving entities.
Yeah, I think it was about six awards total for life-saving efforts during the last two years. So I may, don't quote me on that, I don't have it in front of me, but that was pretty close.
Yeah, just, just to say the same thing that, that the Mayor said, it, it was enlightening, heartwarming, and really made me very proud that I live in a city where our police department is, is that caring as well as effective in, in other ways, addressing crime. But it, it was, it was just good for the audience, I think, to see what goes on besides those who got their honors.
And, and to add to that, I think you're absolutely right. And service without expectation of recognition is a big thing, and, and it feels like a big thing in our group, but it is great to recognize them for that, because oftentimes, we won't ask for it, but it is, it is very good to give that to the, the guys and gals that are serving our community.
Thanks for inviting, Council. It was great.
And any other staff? I'm going to turn it over to Clara. I can't wait to hear about Rock the Rec. I'm going to, hope you're going to tell us all about it.
For Rock the Rec, we are expecting multiple teens to come, like even more than the last Rock the Rec. It seems like around the high school, some people are talking about it, and we hope that since it's this weekend, we'll be able to increase the talk about the event, so we hope to see other people there. In other activities that I've done that relate to this, I've talked to Representative Catlin, the one who represents us at state. I talked to him about the Rural Grant Initiative Program. I probably got some of those mixed up. But essentially, I talked about how Russell Stovers is closing down and what he planned on doing to help us. And he talked about poss, that there's a speech going between the Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory, like they might want to come and move to our town or expand here and take over the previous factory. And I also talked to Senator Cor, Corum?
Corum.
Okay, I hope I said that right. About, well, he mostly spoke to me about water rights. But I'm...
He does that to all of us.
Yes, and something about the co-op initiative, something about transparency. I didn't necessarily get it. But essentially, what I'm trying to say is, in my off-time, I've been trying to advocate for our rural community and just trying to highlight the discrepancies between urban communities and the funding that they get versus towns such as Montrose and Delta and the funding that we get. So there's that. And I've, what's the word? I've highlighted previous UTEC Council proclamations in regards to vaping and the Montrose law that followed it in speech and debate. And I didn't qualify for nationals, but I'm going to the pilot program in State Congress on the 21st. So I hope to be representing our city in all of that.
Congratulations. Fantastic.
That's awesome.
Great job.
Thank you.
Anything else? I don't want to cut you off. Would you just say, what, what time is Rock the Rec? Where is it for some of the people in the audience that, that may not know?
So Rock...
And you're on TV, so plug it.
I don't like the attention. Um, Rock the Rec is this Friday. I believe it starts at nine to eleven. We are having a, the theme is Winner Takes It All, and it's a sporting event with a pottery event at the same time. And we just hope to see the youth in our community come.
And it is where?
At the Montrose Recreational District.
Thanks. Council?
I have nothing. I don't think so.
We've said a lot, so I'm done.
Yeah, I don't have anything additional.
I have a couple things. One is fun and one is serious. If you saw that we had, the City Council had a executive session this evening, it's something we do on an annual basis, and it's where Council sits down with Bill Bell, our city manager, reviews the year, evaluates his performance. And I'm very pleased to say, as a result of those discussions, Bill Bell will continue to be the city manager for a long time, we hope, but at least for the next year. Congratulations, you've done a super job in 2019. It was very enjoyable and, and again, enlightening to sit down and have that conversation with you and review the year. 2019 was a super year, and much of that was due to your leadership, sir. And we couldn't be, I think as a Council, I can say, we couldn't be happier. Thank you.
We're, we're lucky to have you. Thank you for your service.
And tomorrow, Barbara Bynum has a birthday. I won't put the number out there, but I'll go ahead and start. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Barbara. Happy birthday to you.